Just as long as everybody knows that out there. So, all right, Larry, you're first. Come on up.
All right, thank you.
There's no open session now.
Oh, sorry. Is anyone here for open session? My bad. Are you there for open session?
Um, I'm representing the cultural council.
Okay.
You want to act?
No, that'll come a little bit. Thanks, guys. Sorry about that.
I understand you guys know why I'm here tonight. I'm assuming Brian spoke to you briefly about this at your last meeting. Basically, my situation is, um, for the last over a year, I've been planning on retiring from Berlin, which effectively I did June 30th was my last day there. And my goal was always to continue working here because I live right around the corner and I've got 17 years here and I love the job, so... To make a long story short, a couple of weeks ago, I called the retirement board just to make sure everything was all set, all the paperwork was done. They said, "Everything is fine. The only thing we're waiting for is your Hubbardston paperwork." I'm like, "Why? I'm not retiring from there." They said, "Oh, no, you have to retire from here." So, that kind of caught me off guard, as you can imagine, because I was already out of the job in Berlin and that left me in a situation where my biggest issue was my insurance is here. Man, probably four or five years ago, I moved everything here for the very purpose of having it where I was going to end up my career. So, to make a long story short, um, the only alternatives I have to this issue is I want to be able to move forward with this and I do understand that Hubbardston does not have a retirement plan or insurance for retirees, I guess you call it. My, uh, situation is in January, I turn 65, so available for Medicaid or Medicare, whatever they call it. Medicaid, I think it is. Uh, so I have to at least make it till there. I don't want to go out, try to find new insurance for the five or six months and it's going to take me to get there. I've been in touch with Social Security and I've been in touch, uh, with the other board that handles the retire... I called them and they said, "The earliest you can start applying is October to get the process going." So, I'm in a situation where I want to stay here, I want to work here, I want to continue forward, but I need to find a way to maintain this insurance through that period of time. So, that's what I'm here for.
All right, so just to understand again, so you're circling back to where we sort of started with this. There's a gap, okay, but when January comes or whatever, would you still be working at the town of Hubbardston?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Any ideas? Have you run into this sort of scenario before?
This is really a case of we're withdrawing our... I'm not going to put words in Larry's mouth, but I think he's withdrawing his retirement request because the only way to get to December with insurance or through December, whether it's the 1st of January, is to stay on payroll. Because we don't have that option with retirees, so if that's... Then really, it's status quo ante. There's nothing, there's nothing really to do tonight other than... I think Larry was hoping there might be some other alternative, um, and I'm at a loss.
But just again, just so I'm clear, so when, when you do turn 65, when January comes up, you'll still be working? You'll be retired but working at the town?
I'll be retired from Berlin.
Right.
No, 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 and then it goes further. So, January 1st, Larry would retire from the town of Hubbardston. After a two-week break, if he chooses and you choose, he could come back as a consultant, much like I'm doing.
That's...
He could continue, he could continue working for you and there's a formula that calculates how many hours he can work and how much he can earn.
Yeah, they have that all down.
Yep.
So, I mean, obviously, I'd, I'd love to be able to just maintain what I have until January because what it means is obviously getting rid of Berlin as a source of income leaves me with no other income other than what I make in Hubbardston until I go into January, go through that two weeks. Right now, they have everything in place to issue a check except for the retirement from here because I'm holding the last piece of paper. They sent it back to me with a new date on it, um, or asking me to change the date. And I called it back and I said, "I'm not sure whether I'm going to do that, to be honest with you." It's a very difficult decision, uh, but I may stay on with Hubbardston as far as employee payroll until January, depending on this meeting.
Which means you can't retire from Berlin either then?
Well, I...
Two ways to do it. Or you can't unretire from retire?
I can't go back to Berlin. That's all done. We've already hired a new guy for the position. He starts August 7th. So, uh, I've been helping them out until that time, but I can't be an employee there anymore.
Did you look into COBRA?
As far as...
Getting insurance if you did retire from Hubbardston and Berlin?
I'm sure that I can. In some... As a matter of fact, I lived into the state and that's why I called Social Security to find out how quickly I could start all that process. For me, if it took me a couple, three weeks to get that, I'm not sure how much it would cost. I'm sure it's going to be substantial. It's probably better off to just maintain and stay here as an employee, keep working and make it till January. I mean, I'll have to survive on the income I have, but that's not your headache. That's my headache. More importantly, I, I don't want to lose the policies that I have because they've worked out very, very well.
Well, you're one of our longest-tenured employees. You do a fantastic job. You know, I know you've got a difficult job too. A lot of people that you have to interface with. I think if there's anything we could have done or could do to be able to make this gap happen, we would. I just, I haven't heard a way, uh, to do it.
I don't think there, I, I don't think there is other than for me doing what I...
Correct.
Would have to do, which is maintain my payroll here.
Yep.
Um, and go from there, so, uh...
So, you're basically just going to postpone what you were going to do anyways till January?
I have to.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
I have to, absolutely. So, uh, that's the position that I'm in at this particular point. And what I'll do is I'll talk to Kristen because she's all set to pull the plug. I told her to wait until after this meeting based on what happened. So, I'll talk to her and maintain that and then go from there. If I'm able to find other insurance, I may go that route, but I doubt it. I doubt it. I mean, the policies that we have here are really good. Both the new dental policy that came in and, uh, the Blue Cross, they've been very good to me, so...
Like, I don't know much about it, but if it was COBRA, it may be that same policy that you have with the town. I don't know if you can still pick that up.
I could, I could call and find out.
Retire like you wanted, you know, maybe check into that.
You'd have to double-check. I'm not sure. I don't think you lose the policy, but I think you lose the co-pay. I think you lose the town's contribution.
Yes.
You can continue, but you have to pay for the entire freight.
Yeah.
Yeah. And but then your income would be back, you know, with your full pension from both towns. And did we already, uh, the other temporary inspector, is, did he get hired? Is he on hold?
You'd already done that back in June as a, just as a safety net and it's going to work out fine for you.
Yeah, I talked to Richard about this as well, you know, not knowing back, well, it's probably almost a month ago. And I said, "Would you be available to fill in for me if you had to here for at least the two weeks, let's say?" He said, "Absolutely. Whatever you need, I'll help you with." So, and he's a good inspector. He's got 20 years in it as well, so, uh, he's somebody that I would consider a good inspector to hire if he was available. So, that being said, I will follow through with maintaining this employment for the time being and I'll go talk to her tomorrow, tomorrow, yeah. Is she in tomorrow?
I think she's in there.
Oh, yeah, she'll be tomorrow.
She'll be in tomorrow now? And that'll be that?
Okay.
Okay?
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Larry.
There was, yeah, that one. That one was on before, so I think we're good.
Larry, good to see you.
Okay, um...
I'll miss you.
Our next agenda item is for our special events advisor. Katie Young, walk him up. Thanks for coming in again.
Yep, what's new?
So, we have a, uh, three-page document.
Yeah, it would have been less if my font wasn't...
It's a very huge font.
Yeah, it printed like that from my phone. It just decides to when it's in notes mode. It goes... This one over here was making fun of me. I'm like, "Shut up. That's just the way it printed. Stop picking on me."
At least we can all read it.
Yes, we can all read it from way back here.
So, you want to just talk about it real quick? I mean, we, uh, there's any... You guys want to take a few minutes to read it or...
I've read it and everybody take a look at this.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it...
Yeah, looks, yeah, right up.
Yeah, okay, all right, well, um, you know, thanks for putting it together. That was what we asked. And, and, um, you know, it's pretty thorough.
I went in doubt.
Yeah, I went in doubt. Just keep writing.
Yeah, well, although if you ask me to do something, it's going to be very thorough.
So, what this is, just this is a nice framework for the position of what you're doing here. And then you've listed some of the, the possibilities on there. I think, you know, probably one of the major things that we just make, make sure we're all on the same page is the, is, you know, as usual, the money authorizations and that sort of thing.
Yes.
But, um, uh, so you've, you've, you've put a sort of an idea in here for that?
Yeah.
And I'll just read that out so everybody can hear it?
Yep.
Okay. So, anyway, Katie put together a bunch of different, uh, not bullet points, they're numbered, but there's 13 of them. One of them is, "The ability to recruit and sign agreements up to $1,500 for acts, entertainment, and services for any events that would be for the town of Hubbardston as the special events advisor, provided all proper paperwork was provided by the acts, entertainment or services, i.e. insurance paperwork and W-9. Also, the ability to have the town accountant send a letter of intent to either town administrator, BOS, uh, select board, executive administrative assistants, or myself for the acts, entertainment, or services." I think, is that it or is there more of that? And that was it. So, that's, you know, sort of a, a description of, of the finances. So, your thought was on that, I guess first off, where'd 1,500 bucks come from?
Well, because there was nothing over that for like any, even like the toilets and stuff. Most of the stuff falls under that, so it'd only be something like large that, like the bench or something to that effect that I'd have to come forward. Most of the stuff is piddly stuff that, like, to come in front of the board, I just think is kind of a waste of time personally, like to bother with, like, getting, you know, a band or this or that, whatever these like little piddly things are.
Sure.
The, the, the big items though should be brought in front, you know, like if, you know, like, "Whoa, I want to do another bench" or something. That should be brought forth because it's a larger dollar amount.
Yep.
You know, so that's what I just came up with. Before it was 1,000, I just... Now, it was like, there was a few things that were like a little bit over, like 1,200, but nothing went over the 1,500 mark. And most of that stuff that had to come in front of you was like for toilets or clowns or, you know, and it was just stuff that just had to keep coming in front of you guys that just kind of, I don't know, in my opinion, wasted time, but it's, again, you're, you know, that was just a, a dollar amount that I thought that wouldn't...
So, we wouldn't have had a celebration like we had without you and we wouldn't have this position without you.
Yeah.
So, you know, I, I feel as though it's, you know, completely responsible for us to say, "You know what? Let's, we don't know how this is going to go. Let's, based on your recommendations, we'll sort of just see how the first one goes, whenever that is. If we have to tweak it afterwards, we'll just tweak it."
Yeah.
You know, that sort of thing.
Yeah.
But if this is, you just experienced exactly what sort of formulated this.
Yeah.
So, I think that, you know, I, I, instead of sort of nitpicking and going back and forth, I'd much rather just sort of, sort of accept this as, you know, a, a guideline and then, um, you know, just see how it goes moving forward.
Okay.
I don't know if you guys have any...
No, I'm totally in favor of...
Okay, do you want to...
Could I just make two suggestions? I don't think would harm the intent. You might want to just add a sentence that said, "Consistent with Commonwealth of Massachusetts procurement procedures." In case there is anything, I don't think there is, but in case there was, you always are going to have to provide that, that those procurement procedures are going to override whatever you would do locally anyways, so...
Sure, yep, makes sense.
Adding that shouldn't hurt.
Yep.
And on the utility poll attachments, the, the flags, we just need to get, I can send, I'd be happy to craft and send a letter to, I assume it's National Grid in this community.
And Verizon.
For...
Are they joining on? The polls are joining on and...
We already have permission.
Do you have permission to attach?
I, I paid for it. Yes, I did. I had it surveyed.
Because they are, uh, they are difficult people.
Yes, the 10, that's why those 10 flag polls that are there, those polls were allowed to use. I cannot add to them, but those ones, we have permission. They've been surveyed. It's all good. Yes, we jumped through Karen and I and...
That's a lot of, a lot of...
Yes, Karen jumped through most of those hoops. But yes, we had to pay the bill twice to get that done.
Good on you that you did.
Yes, so that's, that's already been dealt with, so I have 10 flags.
So, it's just a procurement thing and I don't think it's that critical, but...
No, I, I actually, I think we should, you know, somebody make a motion with that, um, if that, if that's in the motion to accept what, what Brian had suggested there so that we, you know, we sort of agree on a framework here and, and move forward.
I'll make that motion. Adding to what Brian said also.
Okay, that's okay?
Yep. As presented.
It's okay. Any discussion? On favor? Yes.
What budget item does that money, those funds come from?
Do you know, Tanya, offhand, we, we set up a revolving account, I think?
It was the 250th account.
Yeah.
This is money they raised. There's no, there's no taxpayer dollars in this.
Oh, it's the 250th.
Yeah, I agree. So, I, in this, it's all, I, the goal is, is to fundraise for these events, not to come out of town. Um, if it's something large like fireworks or something, then that's, we can address that when we get there. But the goal is, is to fundraise for it so that way it's actually no money being paid for it.
That's a great use of those funds.
Yeah.
And we're going to vote at town meeting to modify the language in the revolving account because right now it's specific to 250th. We're going to change it to something else.
Yeah.
Special events?
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, I don't know if I heard anybody vote there, so just one more time. On favor, yes? Okay. All right. Good?
Am I good?
You're good? Thank you.
I can sit in my corner.
Okay, next item is appointment needed for FinCom and Board of Health. So, Susan, um, what do you have currently on the FinCom as far as total members and what their...
There's four of us.
There's four of you?
Yep, Mandy Donaldson, uh, her term, she was appointed, her term expired June 30th and she was, um, unable to re-up.
Re-up?
For, to ask for, to be appointed again. She didn't run.
Okay.
So, she was, uh, she was not able to, for her own scheduling and other reasons.
Okay, so she's not interested in continuing on?
Was not interested in coming back on.
All right. Is she the fourth one or the fifth?
She's the fifth one. Yeah, fine.
Okay. So, um, you know, anyone know anyone? No, we, so we've got, we've got some discussion later on regarding the, uh, the Board of Health, um, which, which will be in our next item we can discuss here. But I guess, I guess we just need to see if we can do our best to get the word out on these to, uh, see if we can get another member. How do you, um, you know, how do you, how do you, you had less last year?
We did. A good, a good group, but it would be nice to, to be follow-up again.
Okay, well, hopefully somebody steps forward or some bodies step forward for that.
That's something we can put on the electorate board.
Yep, we can do that.
It's not a bad idea.
It's a good idea.
And why don't you come back?
He doesn't believe that. Uh, yeah, okay, so we'll advertise that way.
Okay.
All right, this is going to be a pretty quick meeting, I think, everyone. So, uh, we've got some wage authorizations and appointments. What do we got, Tanya? We have Noah Houston for full-time DPW. This is what? This is a...
It's off an existing list of candidates to have last recruited.
This is a new hire?
It is a new hire.
It is a new hire, okay. And we have Roberta King, Council on Aging.
And you have Cultural Council appointments, but you also have Lucinda here to talk about the Board of Health.
Okay. Uh, might as well do that now. You want to come on up or you want to stay right there? It's up to you.
I can stay right here.
Okay.
So, we had Tom Larson who didn't complete his term because of other activities he's involved with. He stepped down from the board. We were a five-member board. Tom stepped down. We had Randy Miseryk who unfortunately passed away. And then we had, um, Hayden Dugan who didn't re-list or didn't re-elect. He didn't put in papers to...
We got you.
So, Bill Homans came on, myself and Catherine Hanske. We have a three-member board. Prior to the charter, we always had a three-member board. And Tom, I've talked to him a couple of times. He's not really, he's too busy to do it. He's busy. And since I've been chairman for three weeks, I know how busy he was. I have been out straight with calls because if you can't figure out what to do, you call the Board of Health. So, but between myself and Bill Homans doing the, um, I'm going to bark and... Doing the inspections and Cricket's very capable. We were quite willing to work with three-member board until the election next year because I know how hard it is to get. I have asked a couple of people. I've asked Judy McDonald. She's not interested. I've asked, um, Jeff Hackler.
Mm-hmm.
He feels it's a conflict. And who else have I talked to? One other person who was interested. I'm quite happy to be three-member board and Tom is not. Will do it kicking and screaming. So, I don't want to put him in that spot.
Yep.
So, I'm here to say we want to withdraw his name and we're happy to go three-member board.
Okay, I'm fine with it. Oh, you guys, you guys have any opinions on that? It's the way it was for...
Right.
Plenty of long time and we'll just sort of punt for another election cycle here.
All right.
Do we need to take any action?
There's no action. It was withdrawing the application.
Yep, anything else you want to add to that?
No.
No? Any discussion from anyone else? Ed?
Well, Andrew, if you put that on the board along with the finance committee position and you never know, you know, at least people know it's available.
I don't want to compete.
Honestly, I, I don't think it's ever bad to have, um, people stepping up to at least gain interest in volunteering. So, I think that that's a good idea. We'll put that on there too. Anyone have any issues with that?
No.
No?
No, I think it's a good idea to, you know, try to advertise, see if you can get somebody on there.
Yep. Okay, all right, thank you. Um, all right, so now we, just sort of back up again. So, we need to do some, uh, motion on Noah Houston as full-time DPW. This is going to be effective all tomorrow. Yeah, July 25th.
So, I'll make the motion to appoint Noah Houston, full-time DPW.
Second the motion?
Discussion? On favor?
Yes.
Yes? And then probably for the Council on Aging too?
Motion for Roberta King to be appointed to the Council on Aging.
I'll second that.
Discussion? On favor?
Yes.
Yes? And we just talked about Tom Larson and now we have the Cultural Council, so...
Got a lot of people.
Yeah, so we received, uh, what was it, 10, somebody said?
Yeah, 10.
10, which is great. All sorts of, if you read the explanations from people on, uh, you know, what their interest level and whether they've been in town or whether they're new to town and all that sort of stuff. It's, it's, you know, across the board. I think it's a nice sort of mix of cultures as well. But, um, do we have anyone here tonight that wants to, uh, hi?
Hi, uh, I'm Phil Ruggiero. I'm a current member, the only current member of the Cultural Council. I've been on there for three years, I believe.
Yep.
There's always been kind of a problem because, um, the state requires a minimum of five members and the town requires, uh, a maximum of five, the way I understood it. And, um, the fifth member, I've never even met. There's been a different fifth member each of the three years. Someone signs up and then they're unable to make, we only have two meetings a year, the meetings and for conflicts or whatever.
Yep.
It's always been Laura Milka and her husband and Carla Jones and then myself for the past four years. And Carla and Laura are pretty much of, you know, light work and, um, everything that they need to do, the requirements to fulfill, you know, the state.
Yep.
So, and they've all, um, done it too many times and can't do it any longer.
Okay.
Did you say that we limited it to five? The town limited it to five?
The five, the way I understand it...
The state says you have to have five and we also said no more than five?
The state says you can have no less than five and so it's always been really tough.
Can we change?
As long as I've been affiliated with it.
Okay, so you're the only one who's, wants to remain?
I'm only debating. The others, um, they've served...
Yep.
Too many consecutive terms and, and can't do it any longer.
Everyone passed away.
Okay.
I'd like to see all these people...
Yeah, so, options, Brian, you talked about that.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure. I was unaware that there was some provision that would limit...
I didn't either. That's why I was asking. But that might just be voting numbers too. There could be alternates, right?
Well, I was going to say, you could make, uh, six appointments, leaving you a seven. I think the state has recommended that you have seven. Is that, that's...
Yes.
Yeah, the information we got from the state was they would prefer you to have seven because I think they think that's a better base. Uh, and that would leave you, uh, four alternates and you could appoint everyone.
Okay.
That sounds good.
I don't know if that seems unwieldy to them.
Yeah, you have any thoughts on, on this?
I'm, I'm under the, the belief that the more people, the better. I always thought it was kind of, I don't know, not strange, but for four people to decide everything for the whole town. I think that the more people you get involved in something like this...
And you can, you could do the appointments and the alternates based on date of receipt.
Sure. That's the fair way to do it. All right, so we've got, um, can we do this tonight?
Can we set up this way?
So, we...
No, just if you say though that it would be a four, you make six appointments and four alternates based on date of application, we'll take it from there.
Okay.
I'll make that motion and that...
If there are two, we'll come back to you, but I don't think so.
Pardon?
If there's two, the same date and time, I don't know what else to do.
I don't know. The time isn't on all of them, but there are multiples with the same date.
Well...
But they're in order of how they're received.
Okay.
I'll make the motion that we, uh, accept the, uh, applications for the Cultural Council and appoint six and also include four alternates.
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion? On favor?
Yes.
Yes. All right.
That sounds great.
Yeah. You're going to lead this crew?
What was that?
I said, "You're going to lead this crew?"
You know, I can't. I, I'd like to, but I, uh, I have other commitments and, um, my workload is... I'm a mailman and we do our, the Cultural Council, those are stuff like November, December and...
That's busy.
That's when I'm working 12 hours a day.
Just so, it's busy for the mail...
But you're still going to be on the...
I'm still going to be on the Cultural Committee, but I can't be like the, the chairman or, or anything. I'll assist them any way I can. Like I said, Laura and Carla always pretty much, they did everything and I just go to the meetings and reviewed all the grants voted, so...
Okay. Well, hopefully you can provide some direction to the, that's, you know, all of us who have been on new boards.
I look forward to having a, you know, a bunch of people, um, inputting their ideas and, uh, I think it'll only improve what we provide for the town.
All right, before you leave this, I'd like to bring something up.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Somewhat related that, that I'd like to put forth to the board.
Sure.
Uh, that was mag, to me was magnified by the number of vacancies that we constantly seem to have on our elected and appointed boards for the, for whatever reason. And in lieu of, uh, we're about to lose two other people. I would like to propose to the board that rather than later, sooner we get the Charter Review Committee going to, among other things, take a look at, uh, boards and our committees to see, remember, do we have too many that have to be elected? Maybe that's one of the reasons people aren't coming out, the length of terms, et cetera, what they should be looked at. And, or going the way of appointments because maybe people, as was brought out, you know, they're, they're willing to do it for a year maybe or two, but not a five-year term or a three-year term. And, uh, I don't think we need to have that many elected boards anyway, but I think in lieu of everything else, plus going back to the last meeting, Jamie Putney's letter, I think it's time that, uh, we get a chance to review the charter and begin to see what is going on in this town, why people are leaving, not staying in their jobs, et cetera.
Okay, no, I mean, that's why we set that up in the charter, to have the Charter Review Committee. I mean, that's, that's definitely...
I'd like to see that get, get going.
I guess me too, you know, I just want to figure out who's going to lead that. Do we have, what members do we have?
Charter review?
Charter review, any?
We haven't started that one. We have the bylaw review.
Or even, I mean, have we even sent out any feelers for charter review stuff?
No, we did the first.
This will be the first, all right.
Just a comment on that, because I went to a lot of those Charter meetings and they, they spent a lot of time really looking at whether they should be appointed or elected. I remember a long conversation regarding that, so I know they did quite a bit of, uh, and they got, and they got good support from that consultant as to which one should be elected and which one should be appointed.
But the atmosphere has changed in the town, in my opinion, since the Charter and I think it needs to have another look.
Well, it's been five years, I think it's responsible, I don't see any, you know, I think we...
We're losing people, we're losing good people all the time and, uh, I think it's time that we try to figure out why, you know.
So what, we need to set up a...
Do we have, do we have active interviews with these people?
Yeah, I mean, Brian, I'm going to be doing that and I've, I'm going to be reaching out to some others to see if they want to do them as well, so we'll, we'll, we're going to figure it out.
Those can be helpful.
Absolutely, absolutely. So I guess, I don't remember in the Charter whether or not there is a already set number to be in the Charter Review Committee?
When are we updating, can you, can it go to the next meeting?
Sure, I just wanted to put forth because I was looking at all this and it really was bothering me and I figured rather than put it off till later, let's get going on it and see what we can find out.
Okay, sounds good, so the next meeting we'll have an agenda item there to talk about, um, what requirements we have and what steps we need to go to take forward with the Charter Review Committee. Thank you. Okay. All right, so item six is sign year-end line transfer sheet.
The last meeting, you voted and approved it, but didn't sign it. So you can just take this one and sign it.
Is it me?
Everyone, they only put three spots, but we need everyone.
The lines underneath and stuff?
Susan, did the Finance Committee sign them? Did they, did you turn them into the accountants?
Yeah, no, we got them.
Oh, you have them?
Yeah, I, no, I gave them to them.
Oh.
Believe me, I don't keep an original one.
So Finance Committee has to sign it also?
I guess they did.
We did account, we did accounting.
Oh, you did, okay.
No, that's been done, I don't know if there's somebody, I mean, they know what happened, that's why.
Did you, and I assume you saw the process?
We had a vote, so we gave them the minutes, but they still wouldn't ask us to.
I...
Nobody sent anything, so I can be easy guess.
All right, committee updates, no golden committee update, um, still being tweaked for the fall bid, rebid. QRSD Task Force, we have a meeting on Wednesday at six o'clock at the Educational Support Facility in Quabin, uh, at Quabin. It is to further discuss what to do as far as the, um, hundred thousand dollar grant that we have to get some assistance, that's not the Collins Center, uh, from a facilitator or some other sort of, um, agency to help us figure out how we can, um, as a district, potentially repurpose or multipurpose buildings as, uh, the discussions continue on whether or not towns will be, um, voting to, um, or discussing whether or not to have a vote for a school closure. So, that's no real big update, but that Task Force just sort of keeps chugging along and that's what we're going to talk about Wednesday night. Brian, I don't know if you've gotten, um, I don't know how much reaching out you have done to any of that, that sort of a, um, agency or facilitator or whatnot?
That's the nut we're cracking right now, is that, is the facilitator.
Okay, all right.
Was there any further discussions on multi-use of the building and is that something we can do?
Lots of discussions, so we, we, we met with, meaning the town of Hubbardston, met with the superintendent's office, I guess you'd call it, last year, um, to talk about all the municipal offices leaving here and going down to like the kindergarten, first grade wing. Lots of discussion, uh, that, you know, lots of questions about quarry checks and how entrances were going to come in and whether you have an industrial kitchen or not, because that had to do with potentially the senior center as well, so yes, so that, that, um, but we realized that we didn't have all, have all these answers and we weren't, you know, we needed help from somebody else to tell us whether or not what we can and can't do, so that's going to be sort of part of the facilitator's review, is going to each individual, um, school and then talking to members of the town themselves to find out what, what makes sense and what doesn't. I mean, now this is, nothing's in stone, but even OCAM at the last Task Force meeting, one of the OCAM members was talking about, look, we're tiny, you know, we're, we're, let's think big here, potentially, you know, let's help, have this facilitator help them, meaning OCAM, you know, get all the kids out of the school and we'll, we'll sell the building, we'll sell it, you know, because that, then there's a lot of issues when you've got, um, a, a building that's, you know, sort of owned by the town and then leased by the school and then you get grant money to do repairs, if you no longer have a school in it, you don't get any money anymore. So the, even kind of OCAM to salute, you know, have a solution maybe was like, you know what, let's just sell it then, because then a private business will own that thing, that building and any repairs they're going to do, they're going to do themselves and where our kids will go here. So, again, I'm not trying to raise any alarm bells for OCAM because none of this is anywhere close to decided, but those are the sort of, how, you know...
But legally, we own the building.
Correct.
And we, we have the right to change that lease if we wish to?
We have the right to change...
Change that lease, you know, if, if we decided that a wing would be great for our town offices, wouldn't we have a right to rent them less footage?
Absolutely, oh, no question, yep.
And then, as long as we could meet the state regulations on how schools have to be separate, then we could move forward with that?
We could, we could, there, there were, again, I'm not going to remember everything that was discussed and all the reasons and the pros and the cons and whether or not there were really any real big things in the way, but overall, it didn't sound like it was going to be... What, what we got to is, okay, what is that actually getting us, right? So, we're now, because our, our ultimate goals are, you know, to save money, obviously, right? So what does it actually get us? If we take town offices and we say, okay, head to the school, a couple of things happen. One is the CAPS program that provides a fair amount of revenue, uh, that's the, uh, really special needs kids that are in three or four of the rooms down there, goes away, so that revenue no longer comes into the school, so the school doesn't get that. So we would then take offices that we already own here theoretically, right, we're going to move them over there, but there's no revenue gain necessarily for that sort of move. And so, and what do we do with what we've got here? It's not like we're going to be renting this space out either, so some of those discussions have to come too, is like, okay, yeah, we can do it, but, you know, why? Another of the reasons though, is that if we do do that, then the, the library can either go down in there or come up here and then the library's available for huge grants, because there will no, no longer be municipal offices in there, it'll be a library, which, right now, you can't, some of the grants that are, are made available aren't possible because we have those offices there.
Does that, is that something the Building Study Committee can undertake?
The, what's the Building Study, the facilitator?
Yeah.
The future facilitator?
Or is that just for new buildings?
I think that that Building Committee was really formed for the purpose that it's currently at, which was the, the Senior Center and then the Public Safety Complex Review, so I, I don't, I don't think so. But I think that, that's going to be part of what our facilitator, we don't want, the Collins Center was, you know, they're, you know, they, they've done stuff like this before, obviously. They do it for everybody, regional, school districts and all that, and it's just this crazy data analysis, data grab and our, our discussions need to be so much larger than that, that have to do with, you know, population projections and, and school uses and what's this, this district's actually going to look like, um, not just trying to scare people into closing schools. So, um, that's the, that's Task Force Town Center Committee. We, we have an update, I guess, the Tier Two Complete Streets Program, which is, uh, the last phase of design before you get your project into the system to be potentially selected for a four hundred thousand dollar grant from the state. The Tier Two is nearly complete, well, some final emails went around this morning. Basically, what, what the Complete Streets Program is, just briefly again, is the Tier One is to go, um, to, uh, basically, uh, classes, uh, to be able to make the, set up a, a, a program within your town. That's going to be a Complete Streets Program. The Tier Two, which is, um, we received like twenty-six thousand dollars from the state, uh, from our engineering firm, TEC, to be able to do a full-on roads and, um, projects analysis in town. So we have this plan, this plan's available for anyone to take a look, but it's the entire town. They went out and surveyed, they did, you know, all sorts of stuff and prioritized like twenty-something projects and from, you know, uh, because that's, you have to do a certain amount to get it into the Tier Two portion of the program. And these are like, you know, and then you put a dollar figure to each one, it's like, okay, Elm Street sidewalk from the corner of Main Street to, you know, further down past the school, a hundred and twenty-five thousand, da, da, da. So you, basically, you get it so that you've got a prioritization plan for all these projects and if you get the money, you can then bite off a couple of them. And our thought as a Town Center Committee is, okay, we've got this three million dollar project approved for the reconstruction of Town Center, the design is currently ongoing, as we've discussed, the twenty-five percent design is currently ongoing. We want to be able to potentially have this Complete Streets Program be able to complement that. So we've got this three million, that's the main portion, and if we've got these other little projects, we can sort of bite off with the Complete Streets if we get, you know, the four hundred thousand there, plus that could happen earlier than the town, set, the Town Center Reconstruction as well, so we want to make sure it's away from, because we don't want to put it within that Town Center Reconstruction because it's foolish to do a small little section here and, you know, later on do the thing. So, that's still working as well and then we expect to get an update in another three or four weeks or so from the engineering firm on the twenty-five percent design, which will be the next time we have a public forum and people can really sort of see what this thing's taking shape, so...
And then, uh, on the Town Center, on Main Street, we had the guy in from National Grid and, uh, talked about the streetlights and they were going to change a couple, they got changed, correct?
I think so, I, it was in the paper.
And it was?
I read the article in the paper that says something about, you know, the different...
Yeah, it was just, remember they went to a two, like, a twenty watt and a thirty watt, or twenty or thirty, um, any feedback? Have you noticed, I, I haven't seen them.
I don't know that I have, I haven't.
Bob, we saw something on Facebook about somebody being happy that they can see again.
Yeah, I read something on there.
All right, well, make it, make me drive by tonight though, yeah.
I know where you're all going after.
Have to be home before the lights go on.
Yeah, you're right. Uh, so that's Town, and then Bylaw Review Committee, we have no updates on that, they have not made.
No.
Okay. Okay, Brian, you want to take us through your town history report?
First of all, I want to apologize for typos, um, you know, I, I thought I proved this and I tried, but apparently I did not because I just spotted a couple tonight. First item was custodial services provided by DPW, I think I had sent you something, uh, my first and second day on the job, the, the buildings were looking a little bit difficult and, um, there was a, I think a disconnect on who was providing services. Anyways, we asked, uh, Public Works to assume that role and I think they've stepped up in stellar fashion. It's probably not the first assignment that these folks would have liked to have taken on, but they've done a great job and the buildings are appreciably cleaner and we want to thank them, Travis and his crew for the work that they've done, the buildings are better.
Great.
Street or road, private way repairs, uh, you had those folks in, uh, two weeks ago, in fact, there was an email this morning, I don't know how many of you got shared on that, uh, but they were asking about a, a specific provision. The point is, there's still interest from street or road folks, as you would expect, uh, to having that road, um, moved to a town, a town road, a town acceptance. And I think there's some possibilities for that, so I took a ride out, uh, I think there are some betterment opportunities that, that we would want to discuss with them and I suggested that to them today. So I, I think there might be a future meeting and then we might be able to move something forward. Uh, it, it's not going to happen without a contribution from the, from the residents on that street, that, that's just not going to happen without that. But we might be able to structure it in a way that it's relatively, or less painful, um, by the use of the betterment process, so...
Okay.
We're happy to talk and we hope that happens. Uh, the Board of Assessors would like to meet with you on the tax-exempt status of Mission E4 and, uh, I think they're going to propose a date, um, at, uh, they're going to talk about it and propose a date at their meeting next Monday and then, once we get that, we can work with you. They currently have a pilot agreement with, uh, Mission E4, which expired and was not renewed, so you have none at this point and we need to work out, um, an agreement that works for both the town and, and the, and the applicant. Ragged Hill Lots, Ragged Hill Road Lots, the town has solicited interest in the sale of the five lots on Ragged Hill Road. The deadline passed without any submissions, so at some point we should decide that we need to talk about what we want to do next. I think that's the second time that that's been, uh, so there's going to have to be some discussion.
Was there talk about getting a Realtor involved?
And then maybe what we need to do is solicit for, uh, Realty Services and, and maybe that's the way it goes.
Yep.
Those are some very nice lots up there.
I'm surprised, frankly.
Just not getting the word out the right way, I guess.
We need, we need to do it differently and, and more comprehensively. Unfortunately, we have two resignations to inform the board about, the first is Kristen Knoll, who's the treasurer, currently the treasurer-collector for the town. Actually, as it turns out, I hired Kristen during my first tenure here, uh, and she's done a terrific job for you.
She has.
She stepped up, uh, when you ran into a very difficult situation in the collector's office, uh, and took on the role as treasurer-collector and, uh, you know, we wish her well, she, she has served the town well, uh, there's no hard feelings, we wish her well and, uh, we thank her for her efforts.
She took personal, um, you know, she came to all the court date stuff as well with all this, um, you know, took time out of her, you know, took ownership of, of a very difficult situation, I mean, there's some stuff happened to her as well, I mean, she got, you know, receipts thrown at her and, you know, why am I taxes, you know, that sort of stuff, so she had some stuff happen to her too and this huge tax collector, um, stealing situation that she just stayed, you know, right on the front line for us the whole time, so it's very sad to see her go, but we appreciate what she's done.
Well, most, most people in this business, uh, the true professionals at least, understand that while that was a tax collector issue, it really tars everyone in public service and there's always somebody's going to say, oh, see, they're only just like that. And so it's a difficult situation for everyone and, uh, she did a terrific job for you during that period. Equally difficult is, uh, Tanya Matauska, and I hope I pronounced that right, you know, because I did get, I still listed as Town Secretary because that's my bias from earlier, but Tanya is going to be moving on to another position as well. We wish her the best, uh, her, uh, her work has been, uh, subject to some scrutiny, at least enhanced scrutiny, and, uh, it was some difficult times and she did a great job for us during that, we wish her well in her new position as well.
Please don't go.
I tried that already.
So, yeah, just to say one thing, thanks, so thanks so much for what you've done here, um, you know, we've, we've had some obviously transitional times going on too and, and I'm, I'm glad you were able to make some additional time to stick around for a few, few more weeks, um, because that, it's going to be a big help, because when things get switched off like that, it's very, very hard to operate, but when, we're glad you're able to give us the time that you have and there's no person on the planet who does more thorough notes than you.
Or who could have spotted all my typos, but we didn't give her the opportunity.
Again, thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck. So, uh, in conclusion on recruitment, so what I thought was a single-focused recruitment that I'd be conducting for a town administrator now blossoms into additional recruits for, um, your treasurer-collector, your executive administrative assistant, DPW director, um, and, and town administrator. But we can't lose sight of town administrators, so I did provide a calendar that I worked up, uh, don't know if it met with your approval, if it did, then I think, uh, what we would want to do first is adopt the calendar. It's a working document, can change it at any point in the future that you, uh, that it needs to. I doubt very seriously that it'll end exactly on the date that it says, but it gives you a ballpark range of, uh, where you need to be. This is the second time we'll be going through the holidays, uh, looking at applicants and so that adds a certain amount of extra time to the process that it'll just disappear and you won't know where it went. So, uh, what I was hoping we would do tonight is again, adopt the calendar and perhaps put out a call for, uh, folks to serve on a selection committee, uh, that we could then be perhaps appoint at your next meeting in two weeks.
Sounds good, I mean, it looks good to me, timeframe looks organized, looks sort of appropriate scale and based on what we've had from other experiences of this, unfortunately, we've had other experiences with this, TA selection.
We have three major holidays falling within the recruit and so that makes it, yeah, again, a bit more challenging, but if it was easy, anyone could handle this, I guess.
And then we'll have to just talk about how to advertise. Advertising would go probably through the message board, would go through Town Facebook, Town Website, um, you know...
All, all the town avenues, but we'll be also doing, uh, New England-wide contacts with municipal associations, including MMA, but we'll certainly include, as we did the last time, Maine, Vermont, Connecticut.
List serve?
Wherever there is one, there's a personnel association that has a list serve, we'll use theirs as well.
Okay. Okay, so you need...
I think of the full list of, uh, of where we put the last one out when we had the committee for, uh, the last selection is a list of all the places that we, uh, that we, that we advertise for, for the position.
Okay. Do you need us to formally make a...
Well, it's up to you, I, I, that's the calendar going forward that I see, if, if you're in favor of it, then I'd go to endorse it and, and to call, you know, establish a call for residents to come forward to serve on a, on a selection committee.
Yep, I think we should.
I'll make the motion to endorse the Town Administrator Selection Calendar. That's presented.
I'll second that.
Discussion? On favor?
Yes.
Yes.
I had two items, I'm sorry, apologize, uh, two items that came in today, uh, one was, uh, Jim McGovern is having a, um, a district-wide municipal listening session on Thursday, on Tuesday rather, August first, uh, at three to five, from three to five in the Rutland Public Library, uh, he sent out the notice, I wanted you to know. And the other is, uh, just a thank you to, uh, John Nason, I don't know how many of you know John.
Oh, yes.
John, uh, uh, Ryan must have, must have seen him not busy, uh, and asked him to file a grant for, uh, some computer equipment for the senior center, and he did and he got it, uh, and so, yeah, it, it didn't cover every dime, but it, uh, it was eight hundred dollars, it's not the biggest grant we'll ever get, but it's nice to see people just come forward and do civic-minded things because they're nice people and it was a great project and I want to thank him for doing it.
Okay, great.
And that's it, now I'm done.
Okay, thank you. Okay, uh, we've got some minutes, uh, this would be July tenth, and those who were present were all of us. Mike, uh, Jamie left at seven fifteen though.
I think that was the end of the, oh, right, the regular meeting, wasn't it?
Yeah, then we, yeah, so, then we went into executive session.
Okay, so, and these are just the, uh...
Just the...
Regular session?
Regular session.
Okay, so I, I think you, you were interested that whole time?
We asked about releasing the executive session once and didn't get an answer in time to, to tell you, so...
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of July tenth.
Second the motion.
And discussion? On favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, uh, old business, I don't see anything on there, anybody?
How many applicants so far for DPW, do you know?
I believe we have six.
Really?
Directly, yeah.
Yeah.
They're going, we're meeting Wednesday morning at, uh, eight o'clock, uh, to reduce that list. I'm not sure what the preference is going to be, we're going to talk to see, uh, I guess the practice has been to send three names to the board.
That's typically what's been done, yeah.
Great.
There are, there are, uh, some good candidates. A couple of candidates had very strong water sewer backgrounds, which is not particularly helpful here, but nonetheless, there were some good candidates.
Okay.
And we have a good candidate, so.
Yep. Okay, any else? Old business-wise? No? He doesn't got anything?
No.
All right, so public press, question and answer. Anyone got anything out there?
Noticeably missing.
Okay, quick meeting. We will, uh, take a motion to close the meeting?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second it.
Discussion? All in favor? Adjourned at seven twenty-one.
Noticeably missing.
Well, the more items on the agenda that got dropped off the agenda.
Yeah.
Got dropped at the agenda.
Not this week.